Hola, buenas. El Comité de Salud, Justicia y Cultura ha vuelto de recesión y estamos de nuevo reunidos aquí en el salón de audiencia pública. Es martes, el 25 de abril. Anunciamos antes que se publicaran notificaciones en concordancia con la ley gubernamental abierta y que este escenario está siendo transmitido en el canal de YouTube de la legislatura de Guam. También quiero agradecer a mis colegas, quiero agradecerlos de nuevo. Mi vicepresidente del Comité de Salud, Justicia y Cultura es el senador Joanne Brown. También tenemos al senador Chris Barnett, al senador Telo Tai Te Kui, al senador Jesse Luhon, al senador Chris Duñez y al líder minoritario, el senador Frank Blas. Gracias colegas por estar aquí esta mañana. Así que leí la invitación que hemos enviado al gobernador y al alcalde de Gua'umtah para estar aquí hoy y luego leí la carta de respuesta del gobernador de ayer, pero quiero hacer una corrección a eso. Mis personalistas señalaron que recibimos una segunda carta, o una carta reforzada después de las horas de trabajo de anoche. Y la diferencia en esto es que también se firmó por el alcalde de Gua'umtah Joshua F. Tenorio y agregaron otra frase que dice: "En cualquier caso, no hay más detalles para compartir sobre la alquiler de Eagles Field en este momento." Agregaron una frase: "Por causa de esto, ni yo ni el alcalde Tenorio no asistirán a la reunión." Así que quiero señalar eso a mis colegas, trataré de llamar esta mañana también. Bien, así que ahora procederemos. Estábamos intentando escuchar al gobernador y tener una discusión con él. No podemos hacerlo esta mañana, pero lo haré. El abogado general fue gracioso lo suficiente como para hacerse disponible para este escenario si teníamos preguntas, así que me gustaría reconocerlo en este momento.
Buenas, madame presidenta, mujer, madame presidenta, así como miembros del comité. He aparecido en respuesta a una invitación para el oficio de la AG, la AG, para aparecer aquí hoy y es a respecho de ustedes como senadores y legisladores, así como del gobernador, que desearía estar aquí para asistir a la discusión, que es una discusión aisladita sobre el cuidado de salud en Guam, la instalación de salud. Hicimos una respuesta al pedido del gobernador y fue una reunión verbal que tuvimos en marzo 14 para revisar un acuerdo de alquiler que ya había sido negociado según lo que nos informaron en el oficio de la AG. Así que realmente solo estaba mirando un documento que el oficio de la AG no podía participar en ningún cambio. Se sugirió al gobernador que desde que la legislatura había pasado un proyecto, el gobernador, a respecho de la legislatura, le diera la oportunidad a la legislatura de anular ese proyecto, que en ese momento, en marzo 14, el gobernador estaba considerando si iba a vetojarlo. Así que en ese sentido, y el hecho de que necesitábamos tiempo para ver el contrato, que no habíamos visto antes de marzo 14, y el gobernador aceptó graciosamente. Así que esperó, le dio aproximadamente dos semanas, le dio la posibilidad de anular el proyecto y después de ese tiempo, había completado la revisión del contrato, al menos el contrato inicial en ese momento. Así que el 31 de marzo, hicimos la opinión de nuestro oficio citando varios temas antes de que la AG no podía firmarlo. Hicimos nuestra diligencia y nuestra investigación en ello y creo que ese documento fue descargado con la legislatura y es una opinión del oficio. Reconozco como abogado y como abogado general que este es un trabajo en progreso. Las discusiones que están ocurriendo ahora mismo entre la legislatura y el gobernador no están fijadas en piedra. Creo que la legislatura ha hecho ciertos declaraciones a través de sus acciones y pasando proyectos a los gobernadores, dando al menos la posición de la mayoría sobre ciertos temas. La legislatura había actuado antes con la legislatura de la legislatura de la Edad Centurial sobre cómo la legislatura ve una hospitalidad. Pero en este punto, obviamente, el gobernador quiere perseguir un camino diferente. Ese camino es un camino contractual que requiere al menos dos partes, el menor y el más fuerte en este caso, y reconocimos desde la perspectiva del oficio de la AG que esto no es solo un alquiler de base para el uso de propiedad federal. También es un acuerdo de uso conjunto que el gobierno federal desea participar activamente en la creación de este campus de salud y hospital. Así que mi rol es limitado, solo hasta el punto de si o no se sigue la ley de Guam. Teníamos varias categorías de problemas que identificamos y permanecemos disponibles y abiertos a cualquier líder electo para ayudarte en la realización de tus deberes. Claramente se reconoció que la cláusula de apropiación siempre fue un problema para esto. Como abogado general y como abogado, mi focus no es terminar en el tribunal. Creo que algunos de los casos que se citaron, el gobierno de Guam y los contribuyentes han tenido una mala historia cuando la legislatura no estaba involucrada. Comenzó con el caso de GRRP hace décadas. Creo que fui un consejo legislativo antes de algunos de ustedes, estrenados miembros del Senado, que sirvió cuando el gobierno de Guam pasó por el ordeal de tener informado al judicial que necesitas la legislatura siempre que haya un problema de apropiación. Creo que no importa qué son los sonidos que pongas en el alquiler, requiere dinero. Y, ya saben, ese fue el problema más importante y brillante con este alquiler, es que requería tu participación porque la cláusula de apropiación de la Ley Orgánica requiere claramente que antes de que los contribuyentes sean obligados por cualquier obligación, especialmente una obligación tan cara y tanto larga como esta obligación, que la legislatura sea involucrada. Así que, de nuevo, la opinión está en el escritorio de cada senador. Estoy aquí esperando que nuestro líder ejecutivo esté aquí, pero permanezco abierto a cualquier pregunta o a cualquier reunión y discusión más necesarias para abordar este tema. Gracias.
Gracias, abogado general Douglas Moylan. Solo quiero confirmar una cosa, y así que tenemos su carta y en esa carta habían revisado lo que se llamaba un alquiler inicial. ¿Hay algún alquiler más que hayan recibido o algún otro inicial?
No, no hay otros inicios.
Bien. Quiero agradecerles por eso y compartirla con nosotros porque la encontré muy útil, por supuesto, para nuestros procedimientos y como un organismo legislativo, para ayudarnos a determinar nuestras acciones en el futuro. Queremos, creo que muchos de nosotros, al menos a partir de nuestras acciones pasadas, estábamos ananimos en actuar en la construcción de una nueva hospitalidad. Habíamos establecido una ley que requeriría que eso fuera hecho en la tierra de Guam o eso era lo que se anticipaba y así incluso permitimos financiación y otras cosas. Pero, de nuevo, gracias por su aconsejo escrito. Así que voy a preguntarle a alguno de los senadores, después, abogado general Moylan, si tienen alguna pregunta o comentarios para él. Después de eso, hay un par de otras personas que se han firmado y voy a aceptar testimonios de ellos. Vicepresidente, senador Brown.
Muchas gracias, madame presidenta, y certamente gracias, abogado general Moylan, por venir a unirse a nosotros. Es una situación muy interesante en la que estamos porque estamos mirando probablemente el proyecto de construcción más grande de la historia del gobierno de Guam y en nuestro rol de eventualmente autorizar, el deseo de autorizar fondos para pagar por ello. ¿Qué pasa en el caso de que la administración avance con este proyecto o este acuerdo de alquiler y elegimos no hacerlo porque no estamos en acuerdo con la falta de publicidad pública sobre este proyecto o el compromiso público para no financiarlo? ¿Dónde termina eso? ¿O terminamos en un argumento en el tribunal porque estamos discutiendo cuáles son nuestras autoridades? ¿Cuál es la autoridad del gobernador bajo la Ley Orgánica y cuál es nuestra autoridad también en ser creado como un grupo coecu de gobierno para abordar las cintas? Esencialmente, ya saben, la cinta de la gente respecto a cómo se gasta el dinero y cómo priorizamos ese gasto. Quiero decir, mira ese escenario avanzando porque no veo al gobernador ni a la administración, obviamente, debido a su falta de presencia esta mañana, como cooperativo de alguna manera en querer tener conciencia pública de esto o comprometerse con la legislatura. Así que ahora que parece que es la dirección que están estableciendo, ¿dónde vamos de aquí? Especialmente como mencioné, no necesariamente quiero que nos pongan en un tren que no estamos en acuerdo con o la expectativa de que la gente simplemente va a financiarlo, lo que sea que sea, especialmente cuando se trata de una cooperación con el ejército, que no estamos tan claros en cuanto a cuáles serían nuestras obligaciones. Y luego de nuevo, quiero decir, eso es algo que creo que el público debería tener algo que decir respecto a si o no quieren colaborar con el ejército en la construcción de una nueva hospitalidad.
La guía que se dio en el caso de Ridalio versus Baldwin que interpretó este poder de la Ley Orgánica que fue descartado específicamente para el gobernador para proporcionar servicios de salud tipo. El Tribunal Superior Número Nueve limitó ese poder diciendo que aunque el gobernador en ese caso tenía la autoridad de nombrar a los miembros de la junta, el poder no era absoluto y eso fue temperado por, y el lenguaje del Tribunal Superior fue, si tener una hospitalidad o no, estaba con la legislatura y también creo que, obviamente, el poder, el poder fundamental de la legislatura para apropiar está con la legislatura. Así que sin dinero, como sabemos en la vida, las cosas no pueden ir adelante, especialmente una exención que algunos han calificado a cerca de un millón de dólares y, en última instancia, 75 años si la opción es ejercida. El problema que el gobernador tendría al avanzar es que los procesos del gobierno requieren no solo que la legislatura haya participado en las apropiaciones, sino que la firma del abogado general tiene que estar en el contrato escrito y eso fue un seguro y un cheque en balance que las legislaturas que han pasado requerían, entendiendo que el interprete de la ley es normalmente el abogado general cuando estamos hablando del ramo ejecutivo y, en última instancia, ese interprete bajo la Ley Orgánica sería el judicial. Así que el gobernador añadiría un tema legal adicional si el gobernador fuera a avanzar. Ahora, confío en el gobernador hasta el punto de ser un ex senador y un oficial electo durante mucho tiempo, reconoce que es importante trabajar con la legislatura y el oficio del abogado general porque, obviamente, son fondos contribuyentes. Si el gobernador desea ir directamente al judicial de Guam, hay ciertos obstáculos que tendría que superar, que no son solo las decisiones decisivas del Tribunal Supremo de Guam, específicamente abordando situaciones como esta, incluyendo la cláusula de apropiación, una provisión dentro del Título V que requiere que no se apropiase, que sería ilegal para el gobernador entrar en cualquier contrato sin la apropiación, que fue establece, así como el cómo entrar en el judicial. No estoy tan seguro de que el judicial tomaría una decisión declaratoria sobre esto bajo el 4104, pero en el pasado y en situaciones similares podrían. Pero, de nuevo, tienes al militar menor, lo siento, el militar que está usando estos cortos plazos. Así que dentro de sus plazos, dudo que el Tribunal Supremo quiera escuchar las cosas tan rápidamente y a una velocidad tan expedita. Así que el primer obstáculo que tendría que superar es un compromiso del gobierno federal que nos van a dar más tiempo. Así que este tipo de arduidad que está sucediendo, que tienes este tipo de tiempo para revisar y aprobar, no creo que esté bien con el judicial de Guam. Así que, y luego estás hablando de todos los otros obstáculos legales que tendrían que superar en el judicial. Así que estaba cómodo basado en nuestra revisión del precedente del Tribunal Supremo de Guam y la historia de Guam, que este alquiler estaba muerto en llegada. No podía aprobarlo mirándolo y el gobernador no me dio la capacidad, y, ya saben, me siento mal acerca de esto, trabajar con ella para estructurar el alquiler para que podamos entrar como gobierno en las negociaciones con el gobierno federal. Esta fue una proposición de tomar o dejar. El admiral fue el personaje principal para otros en el gobierno federal y simplemente no pudo ser firmado. No podemos recomendar nada al gobernador para arreglar el problema de apropiación sin la participación activa de la legislatura. Así que ahí es donde estamos hoy. Parece haber habido una pausa porque todo el mundo está mirando lo que está sucediendo. El gobierno federal ahora se está moviendo a cierto punto, pero la solución mayor aquí es, en mi opinión, una solución legislativa. Provisiones que creo que el senador Barnett señaló que esto no es una instalación solo para el gobierno. Usamos el ejemplo de lo que podría suceder concebiblemente. En este momento tenemos el control sobre nuestra hospitalidad en cualquier caso de cualquier emergencia, ya sea local o nacional. No nos deshaceremos de nuestro hospital local sin una encargada, una recepción o el presidente de Estados Unidos entrando y diciendo que vamos a tomar esta instalación. Creo que la legislatura sabe que solo hay 47 habitos, me dicen, en el hermoso hospital naval. Pero como nos mostró Vietnam y Corea, eso es inadecuado si vamos a ser el extremo de la espina y una instalación para entrar en individuos heridos en el ejército. Así que eso fue preocupante y eso también, por cierto, tempera la provisión de la Ley Orgánica que dice que el gobernador estará en control de servicios de salud, de servicios de salud porque eso no es para la gente de Guam. Este alquiler, en mi opinión, está fuera de la visión de la Ley Orgánica debido a el parágrafo 15, que dice que no es el presidente. Esto fue traído entre los abogados y yo mismos, donde dicen, oh, el presidente puede hacer esto. Bueno, bajo este alquiler, no es el presidente quien puede ejercitar el parágrafo 15 para un tiempo de guerra o una emergencia nacional. Y la emergencia nacional no está definida. Si hoy el admiral dice que estamos en una emergencia nacional porque hay un cargador de avión de China de nuestra costa, podrían literalmente, si esta hospitalidad fuera construida, declararla y luego tomarla, lo que significa que podrían excluir, y parte de la encarga es la capacidad de excluir al gobernador y nuestro gobierno de controlar la hospitalidad. No es solo tomarla, sino que ya no controlas esa instalación de un millón de dólares que los居民们花了钱买 que, de nuevo, creo que saca de la Ley Orgánica, su autoridad específica bajo la Ley Orgánica para tener una visión adicional de esta instalación.
Bueno, y también, AG Moylan, quiero decir, nuestra tendencia durante muchos, muchos, muchos años desde la Segunda Guerra Mundial es trabajar alejado del control militar sobre Guam. Quiero decir, certamente reconocemos y respetamos su lugar aquí y su posición, su autoridad sobre sus respectivas jurisdicciones, pero con respecto a nuestra gente, ya saben, nuestro deseo es que nuestra gente sea la que determine cómo su gobierno debería correr fuera de la base y esa es la tendencia. No estoy seguro de que la dirección de liderazgo ha cambiado. Veo que, ya saben, se anunció públicamente en los medios que el admiral ha dado más tiempo, pero parece que desde sus comentarios que realmente no importa esta semana adicional o la próxima semana, la fecha de deadline. Y luego también, solo quería confirmar, quiero decir, públicamente se informó que el admiral esperaba que el gobierno de Guam firmara primero antes de que el lado federal firmara en este acuerdo.
Bueno, me informé el 14 de marzo de que el admiral iba a firmar el documento en esa fecha. Así que, ya saben, lo que sea, el caso no fue el caso, fue enviado a nosotros, lo cual está bien, ya saben, lo miramos, ese tipo de cosas. Y me gustaría hacer un punto adicional. Ya saben, no culpo al gobernador necesariamente por esto porque este es un documento legal. Específicamente le dije al gobernador que quien les advirtiera sobre esto durante este periodo de negociación que llevó este documento al gobernador, ya saben, nuestro representante electo, los abogados no hicieron su trabajo. Claramente debería haberse rechazado. El Departamento de Justicia, si estuvieran de nuestro lado, habría deshacido este documento inmediatamente. No necesitas un abogado experimentado para ver que bajo la función del gobierno, la legislatura es requerida. En el sistema federal, lo mismo. Nuestra función de gobierno es la misma que el gobierno federal. Sin la apropiación del Congreso, no obtienen sus cargadores de avión, sus sistemas de defensa de misiles y demás, como bien saben. Así que fue curioso que este tipo de acuerdo estuviera flotando y que quién advirtió al gobernador, al gobierno de Guam, para firmarlo o para aprobarlo. Eso fue, para mí, eso fue más problemático, quiénes eran los abogados detrás de esto.
Bueno, y también tenemos muchas otras propiedades gubernamentales que podríamos ver que no tendrían este tipo de restricciones. Y, de nuevo, sé que no hay nadie aquí que no esté de acuerdo con la necesidad de construir una nueva instalación de hospitalidad. Es una cuestión de dónde y cómo, y cómo podemos financiarlo hasta el punto que nuestra gente pueda pagarlo. Creo que esa es la prioridad más grande, pero muchas gracias por venir y proporcionar nosotros información adicional sobre esto. Muchas gracias, abogado general Moylan. Muchas gracias, madame presidenta.
Muchas gracias, vicepresidente, senador Brown. Senador Barnett.
Gracias, madame presidenta. Solo quiero expresar primero mi extrema decepción por la situación actual en la que estamos. Madame presidenta, en su carta que escribió al gobernador, llamó a este escenario otra buena intención de fe. Estoy completamente de acuerdo y no estoy seguro de por qué, especialmente muchos de ellos están pagando más de lo que hacían el año pasado, no puedo encontrar el tiempo o la energía para ir a la casa de la gente de Guam y hablar de este acuerdo de vida. Cito de la carta aquí que se firmó conjuntamente por el gobernador y el alcalde. El gobernador escribe: "Desgraciadamente, cuestiono que será de vuelta en el tiempo designado para su escenario. En cualquier caso, no hay nuevos detalles para compartir sobre la alquiler de Eagles en este momento. Por causa de esto, ni yo ni el alcalde Tenorio, quien podría agregar que es en realidad el gobernador ejecutivo, asistirá a la reunión. No hay nuevos detalles, ni siquiera hemos obtenido los antiguos detalles. Ni siquiera hemos obtenido detalles." Y sentí que esta fue una gran oportunidad, de nuevo, una buena oportunidad de fe para nosotros, para sentarnos y empezar desde el principio con la participación de la legislatura. Como el abogado general dijo, es un concepto muy básico, usas el dinero de la gente, la legislatura tiene que aprobarlo y hay un montón de dinero de la gente de Guam vinculado a este proyecto. Y esta idea de que el gobernador cree que si queremos ver un plan para una hospitalidad futura para la gente de Guam, que tenemos que想出一个自己的计划 para mirar, que de alguna manera, raro, no se nos permite mirar su plan, que obliga a un millón de dólares del dinero de la gente de Guam. Gracias por venir, AG. Appreciate your being here. Así que, ¿cuál fue la respuesta, si no te importa, cuando compartiste tus conclusiones con el gobernador sobre la falta de participación legislativa? ¿Hubo algún comentario o justificación que se explicara a ti?
A respecho del gobernador, creo que, diré esto, el gobernador estaba preocupado por esto. El gobernador hizo algunas preocupaciones que, ya saben, ¿no podría haber hablado con ella antes de eso? Y mencioné que, ya saben, sus abogados estaban en comunicación con mi adjunto y demás, pero como dije anteriormente, no había nada que pudiera hacer para arreglarlo. Ya saben, dada la realidad de que esto ya era un acuerdo hecho, puedo simplemente estar de acuerdo o no. Así que sí, como dije, estaba casi muerto en llegada, la forma en que esto fue estructurado.
Dada su considerable experiencia como, no solo como abogado, sino como abogado general que había servido previamente a la gente de Guam, ¿alguna vez has encontrado una ocasión donde se te daba un contrato para revisarlo y estaba muerto en llegada?
No, normalmente la forma en que se hace es que, bueno, en primer lugar, el abogado general normalmente asiste al líder ejecutivo, que es el gobernador o su gabinete, en negociar los contratos, ya saben, especialmente cuando estás en ese etapa de ello. Así que esto fue inusual, que, ya saben, me pidieron revisarlo y asegurarme de que todo estaba bien. Y suponiendo que los abogados estaban involucrados en ello, ya saben, el DOJ y demás, estaba pensando, ya saben, está bien, déjame mirarlo, dame un poco de tiempo. Pero mientras lo revisé, había claramente problemas. Fue traído al gobernador que todavía tenía un problema con el problema de apropiación. Servicios de clase identificadas. El problema con los servicios de clase, y eso fue la adhesión F, creo, lo siento, sí, la adhesión F no existía en el documento. Así que eso hizo la pregunta adicional como abogado bajo los principios básicos de la ley común y nuestros requisitos estatutales. Para tener un contrato, tienes que tener una comprensión de lo que está ante ti y cuando no tienes esa consideración de clase, que estaba siendo apuntada fuertemente como una consideración no monetaria, cuando no existe y la posibilidad de la negociación realmente llegar a un documento real, no hay compromiso del gobierno federal o del gobierno local en ser capaz de alcanzarlo, se hace la pregunta de que tal vez un contrato nunca se formó. Así que si yo fuese a aprobar esto, podría ser rechazado por un contribuyente o alguien más, incluyendo la legislatura, lo que sea, para encontrar que nunca tuviste un contrato porque nunca entendiste lo que era la consideración de clase, ni siquiera el proyecto, que creo era Exhibit F. No hay idea de cuán grande la hospitalidad, cuántos pisos, cómo se vería el campus médico. Así que había muchos problemas clave y es por eso que digo quién hizo esto como abogado, quien draftó esto.
¿Estás consciente de los nombres de ninguno de los abogados que asistieron al gobernador en preparar este, quote un quote, alquiler?
No, no sé quiénes eran los abogados. Sé quiénes son los consejos actuales en el oficio del gobernador, pero no puedo decir que fueron los que lo draftaron. Pero me informé de que el Departamento de Justicia o el gobierno federal habían revisado el documento y que esto fue un acuerdo de forma formal, lo que fue bastante interesante que el DOJ deshaciera algo así.
¿Sentiste alguna presión del oficio del gobernador respecto a tu revisión de este alquiler? ¿Alguna presión en términos de si quizás estaban anticipando que lo aprobarías?
Sentí respeto. Ya saben, el gobernador tenía el respeto de hablar conmigo en advance. Estaba mirando los temas, raised ciertas preocupaciones, especialmente las apropiaciones y eso fue mi mayor preocupación, incluso cuando lo discutimos informemente antes de marzo 14. Había tal vez una conversación donde, ya saben, ella me sacó de lado y hablamos en términos generales y me comprometí con ella de que vería esto, pero no estaba consciente de que ya había un acuerdo hecho o que nuestro oficio no estaría involucrado en asistir al gobernador y esa es la mejor forma de hacerlo, es que realmente estás allí, gritando en la oreja del gobernador, esto puede ser un problema, puede querer negociar esto. Hay ciertas cosas que la AG no puede estar de acuerdo porque esa es la forma en que la ley está estructurada y hay otras cosas que puedes recomendar. Una de las cosas que puedes recomendar, como toda esta idea del nacionalización de la instalación, tomar la instalación, no es la llamada del abogado general. Eso sería el gobernador junto con la legislatura, si o no. Pero solo como abogado, esté consciente de que en estas dos situaciones podrían tomar esa instalación, alguien está teniendo un ataque cardíaco hacia el sur, siendo arrastrado al hospital y siendo empujado hacia afuera por el ejército porque ahora tienen la instalación. Ya saben, esas son las cosas que el abogado grita en la oreja y dice, ¿realmente quieres hacer eso? Un tema de política pública.
¿A qué punto te diste cuenta de que esto era un acuerdo de tomar o dejar? ¿A qué punto te diste cuenta de que tu entrada no sería bienvenida?
Sí, fue el 14 de marzo y estaban buscando mi aprobación o el aprobación del oficio y me comprometí de que veríamos esto y tratamos todo lo que pudimos hacer para ver si o no resistiría la scrutiny judicial, porque todo lo que doy es una opinión. Esa es la extensión de lo que hace el abogado general. Los que realmente harán esto vinculante, ya sea inútil o imposible, obviamente, es el judicial.
No soy un abogado, obviamente, pero sí quería preguntar, ya saben, así que este documento de alquiler inicial, cuando fue presentado a ti, sé que en tu opinión habías mencionado que había varias piezas, piezas muy importantes y críticas de este alquiler inicial que no estaban incluidas, ¿verdad? Así que solo desde un punto de vista legal, ¿es la práctica estándar firmar un acuerdo sin que el acuerdo esté completado y es normal para mí? Digamos que firmo y luego es como, oh, cuidaremos del resto más tarde, no te preocupes. ¿Es eso normal?
Una buena pregunta porque en la ley de contrato básica, los abogados se enseñan, número uno, ¿hay un contrato? Número dos, ¿alguien lo rompió? Número tres, ¿cuáles son los daños? El problema que teníamos era, ¿hay un contrato? Ahora, la ley está estructurada para que no necesariamente tengas todo en frente de ti. No puedes estar de acuerdo, llegar a un acuerdo sobre otras partes. Se menciona en nuestra opinión aquí, pero fue tan fundamental para la consideración porque ¿qué estás pagando es crucial, correcto? Así que sí, hay una provisión para pagos anuals después de un período de diez años. Hay un acuerdo para, vamos a hablar de consideración de clase. Y eso no fue de acuerdo en el acuerdo. Así que lo tomamos hasta el punto de que, está bien, si no va a haber un acuerdo de clase, entonces necesitas una apropiación de dinero en mano real. Y ahí es donde se volvió a volver a la legislatura. Así que no podíamos, incluso si estábamos equivocados, o yo estaba equivocado en llamar que, ya saben, solo porque Exhibit F no estaba incluida, la consideración de clase, ¿podría pasar el test legal con el Tribunal Supremo de Guam? Y ahí fue donde el segundo pie cayó. Está bien, tal vez podría, pero luego tienes el problema básico de nuevo. ¿Dónde está la apropiación por la legislatura? Porque estaban hablando de un millón de dólares por año, creo que en el programa B o uno de los programas después de eso, los adhesivos a eso. Así que ahí fue donde la apropiación literal apareció. No tuvimos que llegar a la pregunta de si o no la consideración de clase puede ser suficiente sin la legislatura, porque no había ninguna consideración de clase de acuerdo.
Correcto, sí, sí. El gobernador ha dicho en varios informes de medios que, y ha caracterizado este alquiler como libre varias veces. En tu opinión legal como abogado general de Guam, ¿este alquiler es un alquiler libre?
No puedo decir que es un alquiler libre. Es claramente que hay, y como el Tribunal Supremo ha dicho, cuando hay daños, provisiones dentro del alquiler que la gente de Guam está expuesta a tener que pagar, la legislatura debe entrar. Así que claramente, el documento escrito no es libre. No hay, se cubrirá por esto. There is no, it'll be covered by this and we don't have to pay provision. It's actually, if we don't come to an agreement on the in-kind consideration, you shall be paying this amount.
Right. And again, I just want to state my disappointment and the lack of presence, not a single soul from the administration is here. You know, the governor said no new details. I mean, it's clear from our questions that we don't really have any of the details. So I wanted to ask, because this is something that we had heard about, this idea of in-kind consideration. You know, you're right, the lease, the draft lease references it many times, but when we had obtained the lease by way of Freedom of Information Act, there was nothing attached to it that detailed what in-kind consideration even was. So based on your communications with the office of the governor, are you able to shed any light on what in-kind consideration entails?
My rough understanding was that there was going to be some federal grants or some money that the federal government would be giving us in order to not have to pay it as taxpayers of Guam. The problem is that when I read it, there's nothing in there. So I had to do, I had to look at the four corners of the document and then make a opinion on what it said. So, and what were the legal ramifications? Because lawyers are always thinking about, take it to the logical conclusion, if somebody challenged it, would this withstand judicial scrutiny? And I was comfortable in saying that it could not. But again, I defer to the judicial branch and the justices and the judges in our court system. But like we've seen before, if you want to be litigating for the next 10 years or more and subject the people of Guam to lawyers' fees and costs, penalties, damages, just keep going the way we're going and push a document like this through, because we're going to have another GRRP situation.
You mentioned that the role of, the traditional role of the Attorney General would be to whisper in the governor's ear. So I'd like to ask you now, Attorney General, if you were able to whisper in the governor's ear, if you were able to whisper in perhaps the acting governor's ear, what would you say?
Given the situation as it's come down today, I would strongly recommend to come to the legislature, and I've said that to the governor, just come talk to the speaker and the party leaders, even informally, to figure something out, you know, and that's, I've been an attorney 30 years, I've been in all three branches of government, you know, this is the best way, in my opinion, and again, this is not legal, this is the idea, all three branches must work together. And this case, clearly, I think, the governor would be doing us all a favor by coming down and talking to the legislature.
What do you think the reason is for this, this fierce resistance to involve the legislature?
I cannot say on point exactly what it is, but my suspicion is, this is almost a litmus test, because you're dealing with the use of non-government property, a facility that we will not own at the end, a billion-dollar facility that we're literally handing over to the federal government after 50 or 75 years, after having invested all of our resources as a territory, which struggles to make our, our budget every year. I think that those are the big concerns, why there may be a difference, and I think U.S. senators have voiced it many times already. And the fact that you passed prior legislation dealing with the 21st century facility, this is how you envisioned it, the two, they seem to be on opposite ends of the spectrum, what is in front of the, in front of me right now, and what the legislature has voiced, where it wished to go with, with this. So maybe that's a source of, the governor attempting to figure out, is this really what she wants? But I have to defer to that, that is within your purviews as elected officials.
Thank you, Attorney General. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Barnett. Senator Titekui?
Thank you, Madam Speaker, and thank you so much for taking the time out. I know you're such a busy man, and appreciate, you know, how expeditiously you, you reviewed this lease, you know, before anything moved forward. It's unfortunate, you know, that we're sitting here discussing something like this when, you know, there's so many issues, especially our current hospital, that's falling apart right now, and we're putting all this energy into that when we need to, you know, take care of our current hospital. I do have a question with regards to, was a copy of your findings sent to the Admiral, Attorney General?
No, the Admiral is not my client, you know, as an elected official, so it was just sent to the legislature and the governor.
Has there been any contact from the Admiral to you on your findings? I'm sure he read it, like everyone else had a copy, you know, was able to see it, but was there any contact with the Admiral?
Thank you, there, there were no communications that I'm aware of.
Okay. With this extent, you know, the comments that you made in the findings that you made, was the governor's office and their legal house, did the, in their, their house, legal team, you know, that's not part of the Attorney General, did they come back with any kind of rebuttal to your findings?
No, there's no, there were discussions, as I indicated, after our meeting, but that was between Jeff Moots and, and Joe Guthrie. It was raised to my concern, and it always came down to the question, so how are you going to fix the appropriation? You know, I, I went down, literally sat with the contract attorney that had initially reviewed this, and said, please explain to me, what is the consideration, and are the taxpayers going to be exposed to this? And they were just kind of nodding heads because of the, the lack of exhibit, attachment F.
So nothing in black and white on any kind of rebuttal to your findings?
No, no, this was just informal, and that was the, the tenure in which I wish to maintain, the cordiality that was between the governor's legal councils and our office. But at the end of the day, unfortunately, I could not give the governor the signature that she hoped to receive for this particular document.
You know, it's, it's very disturbing when I read some of the things that you placed, especially on your last one, number 13, where it says, residents with life-threatening conditions or medical ailments would be turned away from the medical equipment and personnel located at this only Guam-funded public hospital, the new hospital. Conceivably, under the lease's current language, persons suffering from heart attacks, strokes, or any life-threatening emergency illness, medical condition, or injuries would be refused access to this locally-funded public facility. That's very, very disturbing to read.
Yes, it was, because we take it to the logical conclusion as lawyers, what are the rights of the federal government here? And that clearly was, and I had a discussion with the governor's legal counsel about that, and he was saying, you know, well, President Biden could do that anyways. And I says, he couldn't do that, because under the lease, you gave them a contractual right to it. Because he would have to, like, like I said, GMH, they would have to declare that there was a national emergency, he'd have to sign documents, and then take our facility. And I'm not saying that the federal government is so cold that you have a person with a life-threatening illness that comes in, but when you saw what happened with the Theodore Roosevelt coming in, with the 2,000 people that were exposed to COVID, and them having to build tents on, you know, at the naval hospital, wherever they put the facility, you can kind of understand that who has control absent a presidential declaration. Under the contract, the draft contract, the admirable, the admirable, the admiral would conceivably have control.
Control, right.
He could literally just say, don't worry, I've got it out here in the Marianas, without the president being aware that they just took over the only facility that Guam has for people. And that's why it had an interplay with the Organic Act, that there's a, that power that the governor references, that she has the power over healthcare, that's for the people of Guam. That's not for non-Guam residents, so to speak. So, you know, I, I would, I would be interested to see how the judiciary would view that as she tries to exercise it. But even then, the Baldwin decision that I referred to, it still said the legislature has that right, whether or not a hospital exists, and I'm sure everything else kind of goes hand in hand with that.
You know, with your, in your personal opinion, with the admiral's extension, do you think that's a sign from the federal government, after reading your opinion, that they're kind of holding off on this? I mean, by just having this extension? Do you think they're, they're kind of being hesitant too?
You know, senators, if I can go kind of, not off the record, but go to my personal feelings on what's happening out there, I think the federal government, having grown up on Guam and being a resident of Guam, citizen of Guam, so to speak, that the federal government has engaged in a pattern of ignoring Guam, treating us like the bastard child sort of thing, not wanting to invest in such an important piece of property in terms of our, our nation. And I'm an American citizen, as are you all, but the fact that you have a federal government that has billions and trillions of dollars, let alone how they are they giving away money right and left, to go on the shoulders of a territory that is so important to them right now with the conflicts that are arising from North Korea to Taiwan to you name it, and to clearly want a participation in this hospital, wanting to take it over if necessary, and seeing what's happened with COVID and what's happened in the Vietnam War and the Korean War? We are being short, we are being sold short on our importance out here, how important we are to the military, to the national defense, and how scared the Chinese with their carrier are just off the shore of what Guam is capable of doing. So for the military, for the federal government as a government, to be trying to have us pay for something on their own property that they took from us during a time of war, and I have all respect to that, I think in World War II, the people of Guam were so grateful that the United States saved us from Japan. But that gratitude that our grandparents and our parents had to that the United States as a country must be tempered by our current events, that we have rights as U.S. citizens, and we saw that with the Ordo landfill, that we had to pay for the closure of the Ordo landfill when they took it over. They went into receivership. I told that to our governors many years ago. We should not have paid for the Ordo landfill closure because they took it by receivership. They took it back and we're under the contracts clause. So along with this line, I think that the federal government, the document should be sent back to them. Our delegate in Congress should say, why are we having to pay for a joint-use facility, which clearly is for your use with the helipad? We don't have any Osprey helicopter ships in our, our inventory as a government. Why are we designing a facility to take in Osprey aircraft? Clearly, it's because the federal government needs, wants, and is intending to use this in a time of probably conflict. So I think that if I was in a negotiating team on this, and what has happened because we didn't approve it, I would respectfully push the document back to them, have our contacts, including the governor, which is a Democrat, with the Biden administration, go back and say that this is just not workable for us, pay for the facility, let us use it, you know, it should be actually reversed, quite frankly.
Right, yeah, absolutely. You know, I appreciate that kind, my, a short, really short answer to this one. It says on the lesser, you know, the signature on this, it says, the United States of America acting and through the Secretary of Navy. Does the United States Congress have to approve this?
No, no, I believe that the admiral represented that it would be somebody within undersecretary or something like that.
So it's strictly the military?
It sounds like it.
Strictly DOD that has the authority, and they don't have to go to Congress to get this approved, to sign this?
It sounds that way, because they had the, the property, I believe, is under the Department of Defense or something like that. So I didn't, you know, that's their problem, they've got to figure out who's the proper signatories on their, their side, but from our side, I just focused on ours.
On ours, okay, well, thank you, appreciate if you can find that out, just to find out if the Congress has to approve this too. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Titekui. Senator Lohan.
Thank you, Madam Chair, Madam Speaker. Madam Speaker, as, as the acting lieutenant governor now, would you be able to request information, maybe from the old negotiations rather than the new, that you'll be given access to as being the acting lieutenant governor?
That's a good question. We can request however they've said in writing, that there is no new information, and they were unable to provide it to the Attorney General as well, who was reviewing the lease itself.
Thought we'll try anyway. Thank you, General, for being here this, this morning.
Yes, Senator.
General, do you know whether, whether or not the, the previous Attorney General was involved in any of these negotiations? Were there any records in your office of, of their involvement in these negotiations?
I have no knowledge of that, and I did not do a particular search, but as it was sent down to our Civil Division, it was not brought to my attention whether or not the AG's office was at all involved in these negotiations. I would dovetail this into this idea that the former AG was giving away all his authority to all these other lawyers under these SAG designations, which is another reason why we stopped it in our office, because I don't want people making decisions where I have to come before the legislature to justify why I recklessly gave away the SAG when I'm held to certain duties and responsibilities. So, sorry, long answer to your question. I have no knowledge of whether or not the former Attorney General or anybody that was given a SAG letter negotiated this on behalf of the governor.
So you have no information whether or not he was in agreement or he had an opinion on, on, on the negotiations?
That's correct. I have no knowledge of his, his involvement, opinions, or anything relating to this contract as it was presented.
Okay. You stated that this is similar, we're going down the same road as the GRRP situation. Now, if, if that will be the case, will you be representing the, the governor?
The government of Guam is made up of all three branches of government. Under the Organic Act, the Attorney General is the chief legal officer of the government of Guam. If litigation was initiated here, i.e. the declaratory judgment, we're in the, we're in the abortion case, I would be coming in on behalf of the people of Guam, having been elected by the people of Guam, and take a position based upon this elected official's review of the law, consistent with, with that review before the judiciary, to represent the people of Guam. The governor in prior cases can only represent the governor's particular interest in that office's position going forward. In this case, you have the Organic Act statement that the, the governor is the, shall have certain powers as it relates to healthcare services on Guam. So she would understandably have a standing before the judiciary, but she would not be able to stand on behalf of the people of Guam. The Guam Legislature, all three branches, when we talk about the government of Guam, it is a cohesive one government, so, but the, the courts always are interested in hearing as many perspectives as they can hear to make for a good decision. That has been my experience.
Yeah, in your, in your opinion, because you had already had stated to the governor that they must, or she must involve the, the legislature, it comes to the appropriations, of course, and there has been resistance, of course, to involve the legislature in this, this whole scenario. In the in-kind contributions or whatever it may be within the lease, what, in your opinion, what does in-kind mean?
You know, we, I was starting the research on that issue, about whether or not jurisdictions in the states have had the appropriations authority bypassed by, like, an executive, a chief executive trying to make an agreement so that no actual money would be paid. Our research was continuing on that subject, but in-kind is anything that's not money. So to, to use a taxpayer money is where the appropriations clause normally kicks in, clearly an appropriation cash dollars. In-kind, when it was talked about, was money coming in from the outside, or maybe even services. The Admiral did comment about bringing in veterans from the outer islands, Palau, apparently there's a lot of veterans in the Mariana Islands, that he thought would be a good idea to bring into Guam to use the facility sort of thing. So maybe the federal government would offset the costs that our private or government hospital would be incurring with those sorts of things. You see, that's how amorphous it was. I didn't understand what in-kind really meant. There was talk about grants that are not in writing or committed yet, there's talk of the military needing the facility for the Osprey, you know, stuff like when you use a helicopter, these, the, the incident of, of death occurs more because there's movement of the body sort of thing, of the patient, but the Osprey could go from point A to point B in a long distance and just bring them right into the facility. So that was my understanding of, there's some sort of a tit-for-tat that the federal government was interested into. I was concerned, though, that the current govern, the current Admiral, I understood was going to be leaving in June.
Leaving in June.
So, you know, and this is how we've experienced military on Guam, they're here and then they're gone, as opposed to we residents, you know, in terms of negotiating, that was kind of concerning me.
Yeah, and the reason why I asked the definition in-kind, because, again, that may be the hesitance of the governor coming down here and including the legislature, and because the, the military had admitted that they underbuilt Naval Hospital, based on the fact that when it was built, there were the inception of building that, the hotspot or, or the, the, what's happening in this neck of the woods were not happening yet. And so that being said, there was a need to build a facility, and it just so happened to, we need a facility, we under- And it just so happened to, we need a facility, we underbuilt that, and the governor has this plan as a legacy to build a hospital. Hey, there's a mutual need. So we won't look bad by underbuilding, and you have a need, we'll come together. In your opinion, in in-kind contributions or in-kind, in your opinion, is, from what you read, is this facility a GovGuam facility or a military facility?
I would term it as a joint use facility. It was both GovGuam and the federal government, specifically the Department of Defense, military. Because the location, close to Anderson, close to Big Navy, between the two, that sort of thing. So it was, it was very beneficial and probably the best place to put a joint use Navy, Anderson Air Force type facility, close to the airfield, close to the ships coming in. So it's a joint use agreement. It's not a land lease. If they wanted to lease Eagles Field to us, it would be straightforward. This was not.
Yeah. No, no, I know the reason why I'm asking is because again, knowing that they admitted that they underbuilt and the fact that there is a, there is a mutual need and there's in-kind and the hesitance involving the legislature, that this, the cost will all be incurred through in-kind, through the, through grants, et cetera. And that, again, as you said, there's a, there are clauses there that said, when the military needs it, it becomes theirs. It becomes solely theirs.
Correct.
So that's why I'm asking again, that it's really theirs in this case? We use it in the interim?
I see where you're going with it, and I do agree with you. You, and this is again where the attorney comes in, take into its logical conclusion, the lesser has a right to exercise, and they don't even talk how long the emergency can last. There's no, and I brought it up to the governor's attorneys, where is the definition for what qualifies as a national emergency? What's the length of it and so forth? So Senator, you're well taken on saying that, that that is exactly what the, could conceivably occur.
And that's what I'm wondering. I mean, because at some point, I mean, again, if we're going to go to court, there's going to be, you know, I mean, she knows how the GRRP situation turned out, and I think, I think if I'm not mistaken, she was in the legislature and voted against that GRRP contract. So she knows where this is headed, unless, again, she has information that it's maybe relevant to what we're saying at this point, that, I mean, this road that we're going down, or as I mentioned, that it's, it's ours until it's theirs.
Yes. Yes, and that's, I think you, you're explaining exactly what may be going on, but you know, my role here is limited to non-public policy matters, and that's why I believe that the Speaker and the leadership and membership of the legislature helps to form that public policy decision and to, but at least the attorney has to point out, like you are, that paragraph 15 has some serious implications on how far it could be taken.
Yeah. Yeah, because I just, I mean, you know, common sense would just say, you know who's going to pay for it? You, you know, you tell your son to go out and look for a car, but at some point, he's gonna, he or she will have to involve you because, you know, you're going to be the one to pay for it.
That's correct. And Senator, along the lines of what you're saying, this legislature has over 20 years ago or so specifically said that the governor of Guam property shall be used for this purpose. The financing, we will lease back for the advanced financing that's given, like what was done, I believe, last year with that 21st Century Healthcare Act. That was a public policy that was made, and at the end of the day, the people of Guam will own it.
Yeah.
And what you're pointing out, again, is a public policy question, but that was the way that the legislatures have been speaking on this issue. By the way, another problem that the governor's going to have without the Attorney General's signature, they won't get financing. I doubt very highly that if the governor tried to sign the agreement and then try to get any form of financing from any bank, like we had last time I was the AG, without the Attorney General's signature, no loan officer could ever legally authorize a loan.
Okay, so my last question is, again, so that being said, General, just want to iterate, reiterate, the, if the ongoing negotiations continue with the admiral and the, and the governor, and the legislature still not involved, and your recommendations, your findings at this point are not adhered to, will you affix your signature to that, to that contract?
The one right now?
Yes.
Uh, no.
No.
No, cannot.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Lohan. Senator Duñez.
This is Mazi, Madam Chair. Thank you, General, for making your valuable time, taking out of your schedule to come down and be present. I want to join my colleagues in expressing my sincere disappointment that not one individual is in this hall representing the governor's office, the executive branch of government. I think that's a real disservice. I want to thank the Speaker for being gracious. We had this held originally in our session hall out of due respect, much like we call other sessions for delivery of addresses and the like. We gave the due respect, but now we're here. General, you know, there's been many great questions asked, so I just narrow mine down to two at this point. First and foremost, as my good colleague Senator Chris Burnett mentioned, attempt at good faith, my statement from day one was that this entire process has been entered into in bad faith. That's my statement. But I think it's important to put back on the record once again, General, that in the normal course of negotiations, in the normal course of the Attorney General as the chief legal officer of the government of Guam, your duties would be to review as to legality and form contracts to be entered into the government of Guam while they are in process. Wouldn't that be correct so that you can provide the guidance and whatever else is needed going forward to ensure that many of the things that you've pointed out in your excellent review here would be avoided and that we would, wouldn't be reviewing a contract sort of after the fact? I just think that's so important to put on the record.
My understanding of Guam law is that the Attorney General does not need to be involved in the negotiation. It goes into the broader question, most department heads want the AG involved in it because they need the legal advice, they need to know how the contract provisions affect their function. But Guam law requires that before the governor signs the contract that the AG's signature is required. So that legal review that we're talking about occurs there and required by Guam law, hence why I don't think any financing can occur, because without that observance and respect for the Guam law that requires the governor's signature, or I'm sorry, the Attorney General's signature over the governor's signature, you're not going to get financing. But in this case, imagine a situation where the Attorney General signed off on this contract, governor takes it, starts getting her loans based upon it, and the bank saying, well, you got the AG's signature, it's good with us. Nobody challenges this, and then they start the construction and so forth, and then somebody files a lawsuit, and the whole project is stopped. There's nothing, you know, there's damages associated with stopping a project like this. The amount of injury that can occur with the Attorney General signing off on a document without proper legal review can be tremendous, such, again, the GRRP is an example, one of the several examples that our government has gone through. So the system was designed, the process was designed to prevent this from occurring. It's better we do this now than after. And that's why I feel what we did at the office is important, and this is a work in progress. You know, tomorrow, the governor may choose to come down and recognize the, it's more important to get something done than nothing.
Yeah. And General, the reason why I represent that to you as having sent a number of contracts down to the Attorney General's office, your time and times of other Attorney Generals, is not once has I, as a director or as a representative of the government of Guam, nor the governors that I was working with that would have a signature on the document, not once had they ever said that they would sign something in final to a contract or a lease or any type of government agreement prior to the review of the Attorney General. And so that's why I'm trying to say it, there's no question in my mind at least, that may be a good faith effort in trying to get you on board, but this, in my opinion, has been an after-the-fact discussion. General, my last question is, there's been many representations, and this may seem rhetorical in nature, but there's been many representations, and I've even gotten many phone calls from individuals who are in favor of this project, that consistently say to me, we cannot lose this land. Is there any representation to you, General, in this agreement that's been put forth, that land is being transferred in fee simple or otherwise and would become the property of the government of Guam?
There's nothing in the draft agreement that was given to us that makes any commitment that the federal government will give us the property in any respect. And that's why the impact that after, conceivably 50 to 75 years, after a billion dollar and more has been spent on this, we're going to have to go back and build another facility because it is not ours.
And that's why I've told many of those who are trying to change my mind on this proposal, you cannot, in my humble opinion, lose something you don't have. The landowners lost something they had, but the government of Guam does not stand to lose anything here except its shirt. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Senator Duñez. Minority Leader, Senator Blas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. General Mullen, thank you as well.
You're welcome, sir.
For being here. I also want to share my disappointment that this conversation, which was, in my mind, would have been very beneficial for the community to be, to participate in and listening on, was being severely restricted. However, I appreciate the time that you're taking to be able to answer some of the questions that we may have, that we have with regard to, at least where we're at right now. And I want to go back to, I guess, one of the very first questions that you asked, and you said that, you know, right now, I guess the governor has been given a deadline of April 30th to be able to, to work out the issues. And I think that new media reports, and unfortunately, General Mullen, I have to refer to media reports a lot when we're talking about this conversation, because that's where we get our information most of the time from this administration, as opposed to having conversations like this to be able to sit down and find out what's going on, that there have been no drafts of any new changes to this lease agreement have been presented to you so far.
That's correct.
Okay. Has there been any discussion with you with regard to, other than your, you know, your post-review, short discussion on what you had come up with, has there been any discussion with any member, with the administration, the lieutenant governor, any member of the administration, on how to be able to address some of the concerns that you have brought to them?
The governor and her staff and myself are of the understanding that they are going to look at these issues and that we keep the lines of communication open.
Okay.
So if the governor wishes me to do anything, I'm open, you know, whether it be helping to negotiate another document, whether, whatever the case is. So it was constructive that the governor understood that these are our concerns, that I cannot budge on the appropriations question, and that she was, my understanding, going to be looking at all the different options.
But she has had no discussions, nor has any member of the administration, had any discussion with you as to what those alternatives may be?
I'm sorry?
There hasn't been any discussion with the governor or any member of this administration of what those alternatives may be?
No.
Recognizing full well that at the end of the day, no matter what, that document is going to have to come back to you for review and to see whether or not those issues that you have addressed have been mitigated?
Correct. Or come up with a whole new contract, a whole new lease agreement, different perspective. You know, maybe the governor of Guam gets to own the property after, stuff like that. So a whole reformation is fine too, but nothing, they have not communicated any direction in which way they wish to proceed.
How long did it take for your office to be able, once you received of the proposed lease agreement to the time that you had provided them with your opinion, how long, what was the timeframe? How long did that take?
We expedited it, I expedited this, because the governor had requested it on March 14th. So my bare bones review timeframe was about two weeks.
Two weeks?
Yeah. I asked her at least give us two weeks, coming into the office, it was a new office.
So you had a document in your office to be able to review, and it took two weeks to be able to do this?
That is correct.
As opposed to now, today, the 30th is how many days away from now? 30th is five days away.
Yes.
Wouldn't it be then disingenuous on their part if they were to be, provide you a document today and ask you to do that review?
Given what I've received, given the opinion and the lack of seeing anything else, it would not be realistic.
It wouldn't be realistic. And so then, it was the understanding that the document, that the admiral had provided the governor up until the 30th to present to him a signed document that would also mean that you would have to sign off on this document. Is that correct?
It's conceivable that the governor might just sign it and then try to move forward with that signed document. I don't know. I don't want to attribute any, any.
Sure, sure, sure.
Actions to anybody, but that's why I say, try to get, the financing is going to be an issue if it's attempted.
Okay. And let's go to the document itself. You know, other than the legislative authority that you had pointed out, were there any other provisions in that proposed lease that may have been in contradiction to local or federal statutes?
That's correct. In one of the cases cited by the, or used by the Supreme Court of Guam, the 5GCA 22401A3 literally indicates that it shall be illegal for the governor to sign a contract that does not have an appropriation. So that was a statutory provision in Guam law that's already been enacted and applied by the Supreme Court of Guam, and I believe it was on either the GRRP case or the subsequent one with Governor Camacho, I believe, was the other case. So that was another provision, and then obviously, the 21st Century Healthcare Act of 2021 did not comply, did not fall within an exception that would allow the governor to proceed. The lease was incomplete. There's a big problem on lacking those attachments on the scope of the hospital and the in-kind And then the sole and exclusive use, which was tempered, it was a temper to the governor's power to proceed forward, because my understanding, the governor believed that under the Organic Act, she has the authority to decide if a hospital shall be built, and that the governor would have the authority also to commit funds under that provision. And that's why this idea that we don't control it necessarily isn't, is a joint use agreement, it's going to pull away from that argument. And then the Baldwin case, which, you know, is decades old already, but the fundamentals of what they said was that although the governor has this authority, it's tempered by the legislative authority. So it's not a clear cut case of the governor pushing forward without an appropriation. And in fact, the legislature's core purpose is the power of the purse. You can do oversights, information gathering and so forth as part of that, but the sole authority of the legislature is to appropriate funds. That is the most powerful authority that Congress has recognized time and time again, and Guam has recognized as well.
Okay. Okay, what about federal statutes? Were there any, any portions of, in your review of this lease agreement that may, that had raised your suspicion or ire with regard to whether or not by federal statute, we even have the ability to be able to, in particular here, General Mullen, I'm looking at, and they spend a whole lot of time on the environmental concern, okay? And in recognizing that it's going to be the less see or the people of Guam that are going to be responsible for the mitigation of any environmental concerns that may happen sense to this, okay? Not to scare any, you know, any of the residents that live in that area, but we don't know what's in that. Not to scare any, you know, any of the residents that live in that area, but we don't know what's in that area.
Right.
And does the Department of Defense in this matter? Or the government of Guam for, for taking on this responsibility? Have that authority? To be able to? Federal statute is pretty clear as to who's, who's responsible for this? Your, your thoughts on that?
You know, the prudent thing to do would be to do a pre-inspection? To have the Guam EPA go out there before you sign the agreement? To just get an idea? I have to look at the provision carefully on whose responsibility was it? Because obviously, if, let alone if they start digging and they find this was a, a? How would you say, a village of the ancient past? And that puts a stop on this for conceivably a year or more? You know, those are the things that
You're lucky if it's just a year.
Yeah, exactly, exactly. So, you know, those sorts of issues? That's why the lawyers have to come in before and start anticipating this? The federal government wouldn't really be aware of it? But they're putting us on a ten-year timeframe? You build that facility within ten years or else you're gonna be paying the back ten years of lease payments? So, but this is why the lawyers had to have identified what property are we starting to build on? And what you're bringing up is, is very important, obviously? That could have been a, they could have dug a hole and thrown a bunch of wastes in it? PCBs and like they've done before on World War Two? So, and let alone the other conflicts? So, yes, Senator? This is exactly the questions that have to be asked? We just didn't need to get that far based on this two-week period in our review of the contract?
And so obviously, there are, you know, there are a lot of questions and I, I thank you, you know, General Mullen? You know, for, for your candor and your ability to be able to answer some of the questions? I know that you're constrained a lot of times in being able and what you were able to say? In that, you know, I, I recognize, I understand? You know, for lack of a better term, the attorney-client privilege, but then also staying in your lane? And, and I appreciate, I, I can see that, that sometimes you're, okay, but I, thank you. Couple, just a couple more questions? I, I guess I, I just wanted some clarification? You said that after you provided the documentation, your, your opinion to them on, on the proposal? Did you say you sat with the contractor?
I'm sorry?
Did you say you sat with a contractor?
No.
Okay. I just wanted, I thought, I thought that's what I heard, I just wanted
The, the governor and I had discussions after the opinion was issued? But I mean, the, what I see, if we're talking practically speaking? The financing isn't gonna happen?
Yeah.
And that's the key thing the government of Guam has to come up with? How are you gonna build this? So, without the contract signed by the Attorney General under Guam law? You won't get an approval?
Yeah, because you know, one of the things is, is, is obviously? This is just the tip of the iceberg? You know, because, correct me if I'm wrong? But I hope that there's a little bit more to, to, to this answer? Other than, this is just a document for the lease of the land?
No, no, it's, it's more than that. It's the, it's the federal government, as this, as you senators have been pointing out? The federal government clearly has an interest in this use of this property? They're not giving us the full use of that land? They're telling us that you're gonna build it, you're gonna pay for it? And we're gonna get to use it when we need it?
Other than those provisions, do you find it also that it's very odd or very peculiar? That along with this proposed lease and they're gonna say, okay, you can lease this land? And like you said, those, those provisions? But then you're gonna have to put in a OSBC pad? You're gonna have to have these services? Has that been indicated in anywhere, in the attachments to this lease? That language?
The scope, the, the? No necessarily, but the scope of the project isn't even there? So that's the danger of, well, it ties in with money, obviously, the scope? But whether you have an agreement? You know, is this an enforceable agreement? What is the contract? Those two provisions, those two attachments? The F and B? On the, the agreement don't exist in the draft agreement? So as a lawyer, we need to say that I don't, you have serious questions whether this agreement is enforceable? Because you may not have the meeting of the minds? The contract is a meeting of the mind between the governor and the federal government? Well, when the courts look at this, that may be an issue with them? That where's exhibits, how big is your project? What in-kind consideration are you guys talking about?
So, so do you agree that what would be a major component and a major factor? In this lease agreement and understanding it? And the enforceability of it is absent? In, in, in the absence of an attachment? Or while they, while, while they, while they discuss? That there is going to be an attachment, there is no discussion on what that attachment is? And, and the information on that is very vital? Even to your review of this?
Correct. Contract formation has nothing to do with politics? The Organic Act branches of government? Under Guam law, under common law? You do not have a contract unless you have the meeting of the minds? And if you don't understand what the consideration's gonna be? Or the scope of what, what you're supposed to be building? You may not be able to enforce it and the courts may just say, well, there was never a contract to begin with? That's the concern that was raised? But you see, logistically? I don't think I needed to get there? Because if you can't get the agreement of you senators? And be down here talking to craft this? We, we won't even go to that issue? And this idea that as you guys speak with the governor? You would bring that up? You know, this is part of, this draft agreement was gonna be further put through scrutiny and all the input? Like a bill would go? You guys would be adding what you would require in this? That's how I saw this document moving forward after it was issued on March thirty-first.
Okay, well, you got five more days, General Mullen? Thank you very much, Madam Speaker.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, Senator Blas. Agent Mullen, so? One of my colleagues asked me to ask you, is this a civilian hospital?
On its face, it's a civilian hospital? But because of the joint use agreement? At any time, the federal government could come in? Now, when the federal government comes in, you lose control? That's the point on that paragraph fifteen? However, obviously, the governor can have MOUs with the federal government? Maybe that was part of the in-kind consideration that she was talking about? It's just not in the document that you can put your finger on and say that? You know, we're gonna handle these many, you know, thirty percent of our patients are guaranteed to military purposes? Whether it's flying them in from Okinawa or wherever? Or helping the Marianas out? That's not in the agreement, it was being discussed at our meeting? But, so is this a civilian hospital? I can't say it's a complete civilian hospital because of the joint use of it? The ability of the federal government to have use, control? And arguably, full control depending upon exercising paragraph fifteen?
Thank you. I wanted to talk about all this discussion about the consideration not being part of the document? So there is a part of the document that says we're gonna pay a million dollars in lease payments? Unless, of course, all these other things are done and, but those are not specified? They're not in the attachments, the attachments are blank? And they're supposed to detail what is our obligation? And for example, to construct a helicopter pad? Right, that's, those things we didn't learn from this lease? We learned from the admiral in the media? Saying what he thinks the requirements are going to be? So I heard him talk about things like a helicopter landing pad? And up to these certain specifications? And then other services that they would require? Like types of medical services that they would require? For example, whether we have an MRI or not, right, in this facility? That they have a list? But again, are those? That's what he describes as in-kind services that we are going to provide? Have you seen that list anywhere?
I have not and the only, well, the payment schedule is on, on Attachment C? Which is basically what the taxpayers are gonna have to pay for? And it talks about it, and especially after ten years? Nothing that you're mentioning, it was talked about? I heard it during the meeting that I had with the governor and the admiral? And that's why I had the meeting first? And then took the document back to the office and started looking at it? And I couldn't see it in here? And that's where we talk about the principles in the law, the four corners of the document? You can only held to be bound and responsible for what's in this document? We have the parole evidence rule? You can't be bringing in outside conversations and commitments to an incorporated document? So there's, there's several legal principles that show the contract? Is not only what was publicly being represented, but is not actually part of the agreement of the parties?
And what if the governor intends to proceed? Because she doesn't need any local funds to pay the one million dollars? Or to construct the facility? What if she has all federal money? And just like she did with the ARP and says, I have all this authority? I'm going to build this by myself without any input? And would she be able to do that without legislative consent? To use federal funds only for the construction of a building?
First of all, that is, that is not in the agreement?
That's an alternative that's not here at all?
Right, if, if the governor was to do that? Under the current kind of provisions that we're talking about from here? There's several problems to that? The first one is, she would not, again? It hasn't been tested yet? But because this is a joint use agreement? Not for necessarily the, the people of Guam completely? There would be a question whether she could avoid the legislature whatsoever and use that special organic act authority? If she doesn't have the special organic act authority? Then clearly, the legislature comes in and is, their consent is required? Now, for instance, if she had full money in pocket, a billion dollars to do this?
To construct, I'm asking about construction?
Right, on the construction? Cash, obviously, the contractors wouldn't be worried because they'll be paid cash sort of thing, she'll have control over it? It would be under, I guess, the federal guidelines? But the federal guidelines sometimes look to the local procurement and the rules there? So she might have problems there on getting the contracts reviewed? The question is gonna be whether or not it requires legislative approval?
Right.
Under Baldwin? The decision on whether or not to build a hospital is within the legislature's purview? The danger with that example? You can't just build a hospital? You gotta staff it, you gotta hire people, you gotta do annual appropriations for their salaries?
Right, that's after construction? So I'm thinking theoretically, the governor could use all her federal monies? And exclusively design and construct, let's say? She's got the cash?
You'd have to remove
She doesn't need financing?
Right, you'd have to remove the damages provision in this? This contract has damages? So you'd have to specifically say that all on federal grants? And there's no liability for the taxpayers?
Correct, no, I'm talking about a whole other scenario? Neither the law we already passed to build a hospital or this lease?
Right, so, so conceivably, if the governor wanted to, to construct a facility on the Eagles Field? She could try to get all the funding in place, get all the commitments non-taxpayer funded? And do that? But then the question of whether or not you're gonna pay any further?
Right.
Taxpayer funds?
Right, sometime, so then after construction, of course, comes? The operation of the hospital, right? Then operation includes the services you're going to provide? Meaning the government of Guam is going to provide? The personnel, we are going to pay?
Right.
The, everything, the liability that we are going to incur for any?
Correct.
Damages that occur there or, you know, negligence? And all of it?
Right.
I can't see, it, it's
It won't work? And I, I brought that up before? The, the annual appropriation for the? You know, you can get a car, but unless you have gas, it ain't gonna go? So without the legislature's annual appropriations for the, the budget? Because right now, you would have to, as a legislature, move the staff from the hospital up there? And then fund them for the hospital over here? So you literally could just defund them at that point and just say, no? No funding for be used, used at this hospital, so?
I guess if they came up with a really good plan that they were going to be self-sufficient? Some other entity outside of the government of Guam? I don't know, some nonprofit, maybe?
And, but you see, this is the, this is almost the absurdity of the document? If you're gonna go that far, then let the federal government build it? And let them turn it over to us?
I always ask, if this is a great deal? Then why don't we flip the deal? How would that look, right? They were going to incur the costs? The construction, the liability? The environmental, everything? And, and they build it? And we will promise to be their patients?
Right, right.
That's the promise? We will promise to be their patients? In fact, we can lease them our land? And they can pay us the lease payments? And then we will lease it even cheaper than a million dollars a year? Right? And they build that hospital for us and we will promise to be their patients? That's the deal? That's the deal that we are being faced with? And I feel like if you flip that over, it's ridiculous?
It, you raised excellent public policy types of concerns? And this idea that we're the ward of the federal government? We're the ones that are under the territories clause of the Constitution? They have an obligation? Along with the other three territories and the Indian Nation? To oversee the proper function of the territories pending our ultimate political status? So, and this is within their own framework, the federal government framework?
So interesting that you brought that up? Because there's a document that I chanced upon? It's called the Economic Adjustment Committee Guam Socioeconomic Project Needs Assessment Worksheet? This was done in October twenty-ten? I think, anyways, it talks about the description of the project is the Guamimara Hospital Expansion Project? And so it gives the whole history of who's responsible for medical care on Guam? And just as you described? It talks about the US Navy assuming responsibility for the medical needs? This continued after the World War Two? Culminated with their donation of the first hospital facility of the government of Guam's Department of Public Health and Welfare in post-war era? The Quanset Hut? And, and then it goes on in the history? This document also talks about? Back in twenty-ten, they were doing, because of the buildup and a, an estimate of how many hospital beds we would need? And, and this is my concern? I am concerned with what we are going to get in the end, right? And I'm not in, concerned about being part of the negotiation? I've never asked to do that, that I know my role? But I just think? No one in their right mind is going to take the little authority that we do have at the legislature? To appropriate? And appropriate blindly? It looks to us right now that we're gonna end up with a hospital with? Only as many beds as we currently have? And that's like the negotiations that have come out so far or that have been announced? See, those are not in this document either? So we don't even have the specs that we, the people of Guam, are going to be receiving? And this study that was done back in twenty-ten? Told us at that time, we had a hundred and fifty-eight beds? Well, we are told today that we have a hundred and fifty-eight beds? Plus about forty in SNU, of one hundred and fifty-eight acute care beds? That's what we had back in twenty-ten? They told us at that time, we were two hundred and seventy-six beds deficient? Lacking? And that we needed to add on the two hundred and seventy-six beds to meet our population? We also had to add on, you know, before twenty-fifteen, a hundred and forty-eight beds? We had to add on sixteen additional beds after that? So a total of additional four hundred and twenty-four beds? Well, we haven't done that? And then we hear in the media, again, a proposal from Matrix? That we're gonna end up with, I think, a hundred and sixty-one beds? It's, I don't know why I'm, I'm, I'm going to? You know, I, I am really trying my hardest? We want a hospital, we want it to be built immediately? We did, we closed our eyes a little bit when we approved this financing? I don't think previous legislatures would have been as generous as us to give thirty-five million dollars a year? With these kind of parameters? At that time, we complained about not enough information? We want more information? We need some safeguards that we're gonna end up with a facility that we really want for a billion dollars or more? Right?
Right.
But we didn't get that? But we did get a little bit of protection and that was like, they could not go forward without showing us the plan? Right, that they couldn't? And they, and while we were appropriating the money, they could not spend it? They could not spend it without showing us the plan? And in this law that we've already passed? It's, it was in several years now?
Two thousand twenty-one.
That's why this whole thing in the media? People like to say, oh, if the speaker has a plan, let her show us a plan? I can show you many plans? This was supposed to be the plan? We put money to this plan? And we also said? We give you the, the authority to lease property to GIDA? No, we are giving the government of Guam the authority? To lease its property to GIDA? In order to get financing? There was nowhere in here talking about, we're gonna go pay some other entity for their property? And not have a hospital in the end? And then we also gave them the authority to do a leaseback? A leaseback, who owns the property at the end of a leaseback? Government of Guam, it's exactly what we did with JFK? I think UKDU? But for sure? But for sure, it's like, they lease it or we lease it from them while they're under the period of construction and then, you know, or, I'm sorry, I'm saying that wrong, but we, we, we were making payments-
The financing.
Up to now, paying that back, but we are going to own that. We own that and unless we don't-
Just like we do GMA trade now.
Right.
We still own it. It can be fixed, but we still own it.
Yes, correct. And so of course, this 2010 study was all predicated on Oka Point. They talked about it being, the Oka Point Medical and Healthcare Campus will serve as a healthcare center of excellence. This site is large enough to contain a mix of public and private healthcare facilities. It goes on and on and on about how great this site would be and how it would be able to meet all the needs of Guam. That's what this 2010 study did back then. We know, you know, because we've had oversight hearings and we've asked them, you know, what about the other properties? Oh yeah, we studied Oka Point, it's not sufficient. Well, we can't see the details of that. We, it's not sufficient because the governor made another, like, condition that we have to include all these other campuses together, that we have to bind them together. And of course, we might need a few more acres, but I still don't think we would need 100 acres. That's only because we can't build up on the Eagles Field. If we could build up, we would not need to lease 100 acres. But in, in any event, our current property might be sufficient. There was a proposal by the Ancestral Lands Director that we have Crown Lands right next to Eagles Field, if they love that area so much. Crown Lands, meaning it belongs to ancestral lands, they're supposed to be leasing it out, that they could lease it to the government of Guam if we want and win-win all around the location they want and we are leasing property and we own it. Somebody owns that in the end, right? Ancestral Lands Commission, at least it's government of Guam.
Government of Guam.
Yes. And, yeah, so I just wanted to point out, you know, I'm so grateful for your work. I know, you know, two weeks to review a lease like this and it's a really unprecedented lease. We've never seen anything like this. Never, never have they put a lease in front of us to go and lease federal property. I remember they put a proposal in front of us to go and buy Fena, remember that?
Right.
And I remember, I saw, I saw, I pulled out all the old articles because I wanted to make sure that I wasn't like reimagining what really happened there. And I saw the photos of these senators who, at that time, they were there and they were united and they said, no, we are not buying property back from the federal government that they took. And the whole point of an ancestral lands commission and all of it was because we had made findings for years that the property that they took, they did not compensate fairly or justly. And this is a big flip. That's why I say, we've never seen anything like this. We've never seen a policy being flipped by anybody, especially outside of the legislature, that we now think that not only, you know, did they pay enough to those ancestral landowners, but now we're going to pay them, we're going to pay them? I don't know. That's, that's one issue. Not inside the lease again.
Right.
Right? But in response to your review of the lease, your written review that you issued, the governor sent out a press release that day and she said, while we care, while we are taking care to diligently review the issues he raised, none of the issues appear to constitute actual impediments to entering the lease. Almost every sentence that you wrote on your 13, your list of 13 legal issues, those were, those were not public policy that you were talking about. It was not your personal opinion. They were legal issues with this.
Based on this Supreme Court of Guam cases, which ultimately is going to be deciding these type questions. Right? That's why we made sure we were looking at the actual authorities that would probably review this.
Appreciate that. And then she said in her press release, "We remain open to discussing these issues with the Attorney General at his option. However, it is likely that a legal remedy will be necessary to effectuate the Organic Act mandate that the governor shall establish public health facilities, including hospitals, and the Supreme Court of Guam's determination that the legislature has no place in negotiating lease agreements, which is necessarily an executive function." You kind of hinted to this earlier. Can you just be very clear? What legal remedy is she talking about?
First of all, the legislature did not want to be part of the negotiations. It set the parameters like it did in the, the, what is that? The 21st Century Healthcare Act of 2021, which was appropriate because you gave the governor the financing option in that direction. So your question as to whether or not, what was the governor's recourse?
She's just stating that it's likely that a legal remedy will be necessary.
Right. Well, the legal remedies that would be available would be district court or the local courts. And district court has the same model that we follow, which is Congress appropriates, legislative branch appropriates, and the governor is the, effectuates the statutes and so forth. But I, again, I, I am comfortable that whichever court that she may wish to apply to, if that was the case, and this is, we're, we're talking about weeks ago. Hopefully, I think she's trying to get more time with the admiral to, to come up with a different solution. I don't think any petitioner or plaintiff in the court system is going to have an easy time getting this document approved, given the amount of money involved and the time that the lease would be binding an entire people, which is in this case, the people of Guam. It, it's bigger than the Attorney General, it's bigger than the governor. This, this deals with the function of government on the fundamental role of the legislature, of the power of the purse, the ability, the control over the appropriations clause. And the way that the lease, lease is drafted, I think the courts will have a difficult time trying to understand what was the agreement that the people of Guam were going to be bound to.
I'm certainly at a loss. I mean, it refers to exhibits that are blank.
Right.
The exhibits that are supposed to show us what we need to put into the hospital? That means our obligation that we're going to have to pay for, to put and to provide and also, yeah, and, yeah.
Well, like you said, Madam Speaker, you're identifying a, a projection giving about 200, I'm sorry, 424 beds? There's no reference to beds in here.
No, not at all.
So, that's a big part of it. A hospital is a function of how large the facility is. This could be a clinic, you know?
Well, I want to thank you. I don't have any further questions. I would love to spend longer elaborating on your findings because I think they, they were so exact and you've got citations that are, those are the cases I was wondering about too. So I was very glad and to see that that's, that's my understanding, right?
We quoted the Supreme Court of Guam.
We are not as powerful as the governor, but we do have one power and, and that's where all the other powers should, should blend.
And it goes with the balance of power and the check and balance in the system.
Yes.
And ultimately, as you're pointing out, it's the people of Guam that are going to be bound by this. And having a billion dollars and inflation and everything else going up, that is a decision within the legislature to decide how much money, what, what size of facility, everything that was, you've just commented about. So I, I believe that it's not me as the Attorney General that's saying this, I'm reciting the actual words of the Supreme Court of Guam.
Yes, well, thank you very much. So I want to thank you again for your time this morning and all your work on this and your continued, if you could let us know, if you, I don't know, you know, your attorney-client privilege, but if you could let us know, keep us abreast of any other changes in this situation, we would like to know in the next five days.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. And I will make a comment, a closing comment, that I, I take the, this quote unquote attorney-client privilege, not as, it exists to a certain extent, but because this is a public, you are part of the same government that I deal with, with the governor. So I'm not prepared to speak to that, but I'm not also prepared to adopt that I have an attorney-client privilege with the governor of Guam necessarily. But at the same time, that would require further discussions. This is a matter that, it is an open opinion by the Attorney General based upon a public document.
Thank you so much for being willing to come in and, and talk more about that with my colleagues and I. Sisus Masih.
Sisus Masih.
I'm going to, colleagues, if we have a couple people also signed up, I'm going to allow them to testify at this point. Mr. Leon Guerrero?
If I may be-
Please?
If I may be dismissed?
Yes, please. Thank you so much again, Attorney General. There's a, Solagi Walter? Oh, I think it's Walter. Anyone else who would like to testify? All right. Ken, please proceed.
My name is Ken Leon Guerrero. I'm a citizen, a taxpayer and a voter. And as a citizen, I have been very concerned about the quality of healthcare on Guam. I've been dancing with Guam Memorial Hospital since I first testified before this house in 2010. At that time, it was over the labor and delivery room. My granddaughter was just born three months ago in labor and delivery facilities that have not been repaired, upgraded or modified since this body first met and agreed that something needed to be done. That is the state of the situation we are faced today. As you all know, I'm very involved with Guam YTK and Simon Sanchez. So I can tell you for a fact that this must be done properly. It must be done with active involvement of this body. And the fact that so many senators are not present today at a time when we are discussing the largest public works project in the history of Guam that is going to affect the lives of every person alive and for generations to come, concerns me as a voter. As a taxpayer, the fact that this administration is trying to bully this legislature into moving ahead on a project that has so little research and studies done. We don't even know the size of the property. We don't know the toxic levels of the property. And yet we're quoting billion-dollar numbers as if they are hard fact, when we don't even have a design on which to base these numbers. We just saw on the news recently that in 2023, the NAVFAC released a contract for some road improvements to Route 3 and they were double the estimates in 2019. The numbers we are looking at for this hospital were created in 2020. And if the numbers for road work have already doubled, then we're looking at $3 to $5 billion. And look at how many senators are not here. Now, as a voter, what really upsets me is the fact that when you introduced and passed bills 12 and 13, there was unanimous support by this body allowing the elected representatives of the people to review these documents and this project and these costs in the name of the people, and yet a number of you have decided to abdicate your duties to the voters and are not here at these meetings, are not here on these oversights, are not listening to the testimony being presented. We have this letter from the governor, the 24th. And I've got a couple of comments I want to make about this letter. To begin with, she says there are no new details. As a person who has served a number of FOIA's, gone to jail over these FOIA's and got more documentation than probably any other person on this island regarding this project, I can tell you, there is no detail. Number two, there are no plans. So contrary to the governor's bold assertion at her State of the Island address right here, or in a way, when her counterpart, Mike Siniklas, when she declared to the people, plans exist, meetings have been held, everything is go. And yet we know, looking at all the documentation, no plans exist, no public meetings were held and the public was not involved in this. In here, she says that she has been open and transparent. We have newspaper headlines where the governor's office declares that these plans are secret, that the media was denied access to all the documents. It wasn't until I took the governor to court that these documents started being released and started being made available to you. So while she appreciates your offer to work together, she has not been very open with you. She has not invited you to participate in the tax, task force inception because I have looked at the documentation and I have not seen any participation, meaningful participation. In other words, sitting down at sessions where the designs are being discussed, the services are being discussed and the budgets are being discussed. And these are important things because under this administration, she has gutted Guam Memorial Hospital to the point where the annual donut hole or the operating negative has grown from $10 million a year to $50 million a year. So now we have a hospital that's going $50 million a year in the red and somehow she thinks that the taxpayers of Guam are going to be able to support an $80 million a year appropriation to pay the debt service cost however we do it without your support? I don't think so. So contrary to her assertion that her number, her door has always been open to you and I'm, she's talking about you, the speaker specifically, but she's also talking about the legislature. That has not been true. And as a member of the public, I cannot afford to fly to Honolulu, Los Angeles or the Philippines for my medical care. And that puts me in the same category as 75% of the people on Guam who depend on Guam Memorial Hospital to be our healthcare lifeboat. You are the policymakers, you are the budget people, you are the ones that make the decisions regarding what we do in public healthcare. The governor executes the decisions you make, not the other way around. So as a member of the public, I am urging you and all of your colleagues to execute your duties to the people, the taxpayers and the voters. Start by, I implore you to override the vetoes on 12 and 13 so that the public will have a window into seeing how these decisions are being made and how our money is going to be spent. Thank you.
Sisus Masih, Mr. Leon Guerrero, for your concern and your continued attempts to FOIA and get documents even before we did and for your willingness to continue to do that. It's not easy. So I really appreciate all your work and your testimony today.
Thank you.
Colleagues, any questions or comments?
Yes, just one question. Mr. Leon Guerrero, is your case still going through the courts?
I'm going to try to meet with Doug Moylan about that to find out because I find it ironic that, and this is maybe something the legislature can look into, I can't get a copy of my police arrest. Yet, all over social media, there was broadcast all the details on my arrest, including my attorney's name. And yet I can't go and get a copy of my arrest unless I hire an attorney or pay $300 to the Supreme Court of Guam to be appointed as my pro se litigant and take a court order to the police department to have them release a copy of my report. And I am told that printing the copy off social media will not suffice. So there's something that we need to look at here. Because when I was a police officer, we regularly told people, you can go down in five days and get a copy of your, your arrest report. Why can't we do that now? That was a big surprise to me. The other surprise was when I was informed about this meeting, I went to Guam Memorial Hospital because I was told the meeting was at Guam Memorial Hospital. I go to Guam Memorial Hospital and the staff tells me, oh, the, the, the planning meeting for the new hospital, that is at the Hyatt. They even called the Hyatt to let, the Hyatt know that I was coming and I would be there in a few minutes and not to start until I got there. And yet when I get there, I'm arrested. This is the level that we are counting on you to protect us, the citizens, from because you're the, you guys, we elect you to represent us. Why aren't you guys at these meetings? Why aren't you being invited to these meetings? Because in the end of the day, the people that are- Because in the end of the day, the people that are going to approve a billion to $5 billion of taxpayer expenditures are the people sitting at this table.
Thank you, Madam. Thank you, legislature.
There was a short period of time where there were task force meetings. And I remember we received notice of it because I was a member of that task force and I attended and so was, so did Senator Telo. But then that ended. And that's why we thought, well, maybe they are now doing a different meeting called the, you know, 21st Century Healthcare Committee Meeting or Commission Meeting.
Well, I looked at those.
But we could find no records of that. There were no other records, so, but GIDEA records kept showing that there were other meetings happening because they were reporting it in the GIDEA board meetings. So that's why we introduced Bill 13.
I looked at those and I noted that in the very early stages, there were two meetings that you and Telo attended, and those were introductory meetings. And that's how they were listed on the records from GIDEA. Every other meeting after that, on the notices that went out, your names weren't on those notices. They did send out notices and I have a copy of the, the, a notice list. And everybody on that list is either with GIDEA, Guam Memorial Hospital, or the governor's office, and the only people, oh, also a design firm and two people who are not government employees. So everybody on that notice list is a government employee, either GIDEA, the administration or Guam Memorial Hospital. The only people on that list not with the financiers were a, an optometrist and a private nurse. That is the sole extent of participation by the medical community in this entire process. We have 45 medical clinics, not a single one was represented on this committee. We have 597 private offices, not a single one of them, with the exception of an optometrist, was represented in any of the decisions. And none of your offices were.
Again, thank you, Mr. Leon Guerrero, and thank you to all who attended today. And thank you again to my colleagues. This public hearing is, it's 11:28 now, 27 a.m. And this public hearing is now adjourned. Sisus Masi.